Right. No need to record this, or we do record this?
Do you?
Everyone. Welcome to the planning commission meeting. Thank you for joining and attending. Please know that we want to hear from you. If you are in the physical audience or remotely participating, and you would like to address the committee during public comment or an item on the agenda, please fill out a speaker card and turn it into the planning staff present this evening. If you're on Zoom, please use the raise your hand button at the bottom of the Zoom screen. If you're doing it by telephone, you may also address the commission during public comment by pressing star nine, and staff will address you and mute you. Well, it is your turn to speak, planning staff, to call your name. If you're on Zoom or the telephone, they will mute you. Speaker will be given three minutes to address the commission. Please note, anyone in attendance may only speak once per agenda item. Let's move on to items two of the agenda, which is roll call.
Sarah Manning.
Here.
President DeRosa. Frisheh D'Assad.
Here.
Frisheh Hardman. Frisheh Johnson. Frisheh.
Here.
Frisheh London.
Here.
Four, three. You still have a question?
All right, great, thank you. Next is pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, I've informed the agenda as a preview of minutes. Do we have any corrections for the minute from anyone on the commission or staff? Not seeing any, so we can do a vote approve, or I'll make a motion to adjourn. I'll make a motion if we approve the number four issue twenty first twenty twenty three. I'll send it back. Oh, yeah. All those in favor? I, I.
I will say no.
Okay, next is the agenda item number five, public comments on items not on the agenda. Do we have anyone in the public who wants to speak on anything not on the agenda?
Frisheh, there are no hands raised on Zoom.
Okay, all right, thank you. Moving along, do we have the item six? Do we have any conflicts of interest that anyone would like to add? Commission, item. Not seeing any there either. Both that one. Moving along, to item seven, which is public hearings. So now we will go to the agenda. Item nine, which is seven A, three zero one five Greenwood Drive. The request for an architectural review permit to allow residential addition that would increase the overall floor area of a single-family residence by more than one thousand square feet pursuant to section twelve point two hundred point zero seven zero of the San Bruno municipal code for a use permit to allow a residential addition that would exceed the existing floor area by more than fifty percent pursuant to San Bruno just code section twelve point two hundred point three zero, section B point one. Benitz Gruppo is the architect and owner, and Molly and Jim and Nina are the designer. And like Melissa is gonna, Melissa is gonna do the presentation.
Yes, good evening, and to the doctor soon. The video is not on, we have technical difficulty, so it will be all recorded only on audio. But my name is Sarah, and I'll be presenting this time. Item four, you, so the subject property is thirty fifteen Greenwood Drive, and as the chair stated, it's a request for an architectural review permit and use permit to expand existing home by more than one thousand square feet and extend existing floor area by more than fifty percent. So let's get into it. Thirty fifteen Greenwood Drive is located in the R one single-family zoning district. It's on Greenwood Drive between Evergreen Drive and Cottywood Wood Drive, and this is the rolling wood number two subdivision. As for the surrounding area, it is surrounded by newer single-family homes. These homes on this block were built around the same time period between nineteen fifty five and nineteen fifty eight, so they are similar in size and architectural style. They vary height from one to two-story homes. And let's look at this architectural style of the surrounding property. So this is the property to the left. The property to the right. Across the street, but this is split-level home. Another split-level home across the street. Single, single-story homes. Either split-level homes to the south of Greenwood Drive, which down the hill. And this is up the hill, which is to the north, and there is one-story home. As for the existing conditions of the subject property, it has a lot size of eighty thousand four hundred square feet. And it is a one-story home within a attached pre-car garage. The existing floor area ratio is point one eight, which is one thousand five hundred forty-one square feet. It has a lot coverage of eighteen point three percent and currently has three bedrooms, two bathrooms. Here, we have photos that show the existing condition. At the top, you have the front elevation. Up the right, we have the setback. And to the bottom is the rear, where they're proposing a first-floor addition and second-floor addition, which I will cover in the next slide. So the proposed project is a total addition of one thousand one hundred eighty-eight square feet. It consists of a three hundred twenty-two foot addition on the first floor, and on the second floor, it will be an eight hundred sixty-six foot addition. This will increase the floor area of the property from one thousand five hundred forty-one square feet to three thousand seven hundred twenty-nine square feet, which will have the floor area of this new of point three two. The lot coverage will slightly increase due to the first-floor addition, and it will now be twenty-seven point eight percent. As for rooms, it will have six bedrooms and four bathrooms. So this slide here shows existing conditions. In red is the property line, and in blue is the building for the house. Building for the of the home, and in blue highlights the proposed addition. So this shows the slight increase in floor area. And by the slight increase in lot coverage at the rear of the property. We have a thing here that the back on the left-hand side will remain the same, except eight feet nine inches. Then on the right-hand side, it will also comply with the R one zone setback. At the rear, since the lot size is eight thousand four hundred square feet, there's a lot of room at the rear, so it will comply with the ten-foot rear setback. Looking at the first floor, this is the existing first-floor plan. And here we have the proposed first floor. This will now, the first-floor addition will accommodate a new laundry room and expand a portion of a remodel of the kitchen area. The proposed project will also reconfigure the kitchen, dining, and living space into an open concept layout. The addition will also accommodate a new stairway that they are proposing to access the second floor. And the individual two-car garage will remain the same. As for the second floor, which is eight hundred sixty-six square feet, here we see it in blue, this will accommodate two bedrooms, a bathroom, a master bedroom with an empty bathroom, and lock-in closet. As for the proposed material, it will be consistent with existing conditions, which is a double wall finish and asphalt singles. As for windows, it will use E E windows and similar roof gutters to metal material. And here we have the elevation that shows proposed conditions in detail. So to the left, we have the existing front elevation, and to the right, we have the proposed condition. So here we get a sense that the proposed project will incorporate the soldering decoration on the right-hand side with the use of a setback. And this will comply with the data plan. For the rear addition, we have the existing rear elevation and angry the proposed three-story structure. At the bottom is where it will be for the laundry room and the extended kitchen. And at the top, we have the master bedroom and a toilet. This is the north elevation, the left-hand side. And they are proposing one single window on the second-story additions. It will be modest inside, and will not have any privacy attacks on its adjacent neighbors. And similarly, on the south elevation, they are proposing one single second-story window, which will also be modest inside and not have a privacy attack upon its neighbors. One thing to point out here is the first floor, as the existing garage will now incorporate a new doorway and window on this elevation. So staff's analysis on the proposed conditions to remind the planning commissioner and the public, these are the R one development standards, so maximum permitted floor area ratio is forty-five five. So this translates to a floor area of three thousand six hundred forty-nine square feet. The maximum permitted lot coverage for this proposed lot is three thousand nine hundred and two square feet. The maximum impervious area, lot eighty percent of the total lot. The minimum landscaping area that must be provided is at least thirty-four percent, and the maximum building height shall be no greater than twenty feet. So the proposed project, even though it will increase the floor area by more than one thousand four feet and more than fifty percent of existing floor area, it will comply with these development standards built. The floor area ratio is proposed to be point three two, which translates to two thousand seven hundred twenty-nine square feet. The lot coverage will be twenty-seven point eight percent. The maximum impervious area is proposed to be thirty-four percent. It will provide more than enough landscaping at fifty-six percent, and the maximum height of the proposed project will be twenty-one feet one inch. So floor area analysis, just to reiterate, it will comply with the maximum admitted floor area ratio since it is point three two. And this table here just shows that the proposed addition will increase by seventy-seven percent, which is the reason why we have proposed, uh, predictions. This in front of you is the biggest exceeding a fifty percent threshold. So staff, I mean, the proposed addition will not be detrimental to the health and safety of the general workwear. We find that it will not impact privacy or stolen access to the existing property. It is consistent with the general plan designation since it is a single-family addition in single-family homes. It complies with all setbacks, high lot coverage and landscape requirements. Since it is using similar materials to existing positions and surrounding properties, it is in harmony with the skill and character of the neighborhood. And lastly, it conforms with the design principles found in the residential design guideline. And staff, I said actually it is an attractive design skill. We support it for the project, and for that reason, we recommend planning commission to I made a title there, it should say approve the architectural review permit, A R C three dash zero zero five, and use permit, U P C three dash zero zero six. So the next step is the planning commission is the final approval body for this project. So it's approved, so it's pending approval period. And after that, the applicant must apply for a building permit and comply with all conditions of approval listed on attachment one, which is drawn on page thirteen and sixteen, three sixteen of the packet. That's it for presentation. I'm here to answer any questions, and to ask any questions, architects are on Zoom. If you want to address any questions directly to them.
Okay, great, thank you. Does anyone have any questions? I think that's just. What do you think? And will that comply with the proposed, the front of the document? The windows on the existing, are they going to change the most, the windows on any project? Or are they going to match the new construction when what's to go?
So I will refer that question to the applicant. Since that hasn't been clarified throughout the development process. So Renner, my colleague Christie will give you information to.
All right, hi Renner.
Hi Renner.
I've given you permission to speak for somebody ahead whenever they order it.
Yes, we call. Hi Renner, I'm not sure if you heard me make any questions. But we just want to clarify whether the first-floor windows will match the proposed, which I'm expecting you to. The term you're drawing, it shows like set windows on the bottom and sliders above top. And typically before, in the commission, we always get a bit on new construction like this, and we match all the windows, because they'll look a lot better when it's done with a final product.
Renner's on it, on you, if you can unmute yourself. So does it clarify the question about the, the way the windows open? Or is it the trans around the window side, or is it, they all match when you look at the front of the house? Otherwise, it looks kind of disjointed everywhere. We don't need any interne, we just want to clarify that before the.
Sure.
That would be fine, I mean, well, given the geometry of the windows, it looks like the lower ones, something is, we're gonna only look up and down or sliding out. Are you referring to how they open, or just how they just. The border around here?
Right there. Yeah, double hung on the bottom, double, double hung on the bottom and sliding, then sliding on top. Fixed pieces on the lower portion, the two windows over the garage. But to make, to make the lower ones sliding, because they're so narrow in width, that would be awkward.
Yeah, you have the.
And to make the upper ones, and some of those are required ingress, ingress windows on the upper level. So to make those, the double hung would also unfortunately look awkward because they're so wide or, you know. You know, so it's.
Okay, looks like the true.
Bit of a dilemma.
But that's something I could think with our applicant in architecture, which I think.
I mean, I think one, yeah, the one advantage here, and I don't know if you want to go back to the, the.
The.
No, they, the artist rendering of the. It shows how far back the actual addition is from the, from the street. You, yeah, you really don't see them until in the same plane, because the, the second story setback so far.
So we're having audio issues on the, the speakers, or is it just their own view and don't realize? Renner, did you want to, Renner, did you want to comment?
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, my connection is very poor right now. I didn't get, but I, I've heard what you're saying earlier on.
Would you like to respond to questions?
Can you, can you hear us?
I, I, yeah, it is, I can hear you, but it's not clear.
Would you like a question repeated?
If you could, if you don't mind.
Sure, but I'm giving back to Frisheh D'Assad. So are the windows on the front elevation, are the existing going to change the match?
Uh, okay, so are the three existing windows of the facade, the owner is planning to replace it with one bigger one instead of pair of two small windows.
So the, the three existing windows he's planning on changing?
Uh, yes, yes. Currently, it is not complying with the ingress window. And the owner wanted to replace it with one big one in the center of the room instead of two, instead of a pair of two small windows.
Thank you. So given that we have line, which that one plan, just making sure as far as. Any other comments?
Um, yeah, actually, clarification, so we, we have for a recommend, recommendation to the architectural review committee. That's, that's what you've asked for here. Are we representing right now A R C, or are we representing the planning?
I don't, what is the title?
I'm hoping.
We did, we reviewed this in A R C.
You've already seen it?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Okay, this didn't add to A I D. Okay. I have one more question, then. So it, and I'm looking at the south elevation. Yeah, so the south elevation, it, it doesn't appear that all of the windows are being changed. And so the question is, are they, are they redoing, you know, all of, are they replacing all of the existing windows and the existing siding? Or are they only touching the skin on the portion of the home? South elevation.
I'm upstairs, I'm just working some level.
Yeah, the south, the south elevation, it, it does appear that the existing doors and aluminum frame windows are remaining.
Yes, on that sub-portion, and, yes. It is my understanding that those will remain. So the, those windows, the three windows near the roof light, that, that, am I understanding?
As well as the, the door with the side light. And in fact, all, it looks like all of the doors, pardon, yeah, all of the doors, all of the windows, and maybe the, the stucco siding and whatever takes your attention, is not being changed. Is that correct?
So when reviewing the plans itself, how, okay. The material for those were changed, but they will repaint and not the paint of the new addition at the rear and the second floor. So, so this is, we cut to make a comparison, but my understanding is they will remain as is. But if you doubt that people would like to replace the win, the windows, which will be clarified in the building permit when we're reviewing it. Just because the building department does request the window schedule, and it's building permit plans, so they'll, yeah, but whether they're gonna actually replace them or not.
Anything else? Okay, I think at this time, then, we just invite the owner or the architect, if they'd like to make any statements about the design, which to share, it's optional, have to, but if you'd like to, please do. Any hand raised or?
There are no hands raised.
Okay, so now we can open up to public comment. Do we have anyone in the public who wishes to speak on this item?
There are no hands raised for the item.
Okay. Okay, I guess we can move on now, then. So I just say I agree this, the part of the group in the chair's meeting, and I, I'd like to design, and I didn't have any comments. Ready? Do you want to make a motion? I guess I can go ahead. I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve this application, A R twenty-three zero nine, twenty-three dash zero zero seven, with the items that we pointed out today. Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve. And we have a second. Frisheh Harman is doing this, but we can do the vote and then bring him in, since you already have a call.
Of course. Karen Manning.
Hi.
Frisheh D'Assad. Frisheh Happy.
Hi.
Frisheh Lucky. For your, your.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay. We'll move on to the item seven D, which is ten seventy-six San Felipe Avenue. This is a request for an architectural review permit to allow residential addition that would increase the overall floor area of a single-family residence by more than one thousand square feet pursuant to section twelve point two hundred point zero seven zero of the San Bruno municipal code. And for a use permit to allow residential addition that would increase the floor area ratio pursuant to the San Bruno municipal code section twelve point nine six, point zero six zero point seven, increase the existing floor area by clear percent pursuant to the San Bruno municipal code twelve point nine six, so, so, E point eight C, and would allow for lot covers that exceed the lot coverage restrictions pursuant to the San Bruno municipal code, section twelve nine six, so, so, E point three. Apologize if I'm mispronouncing this, but Shinkasia, he is applicant, and Ryan Sinbauer and Vanessa Merlano are the owners. Ready for presentation?
All right, we need a presentation. Our next item, seven D, will be twenty-seven six San Felipe, and I'm interested in sharing that as the one set part of.
Yeah, I mentioned to do that.
Absolutely. All right, so to get started, ten seventy-three, ten twenty, is located on the corner of San Pique Canyon, that's Cypress Canyon. The lot size is four thousand thirteen, so we're gonna consider it a substandard lot and under, or excuse me, as measured below our standard of five thousand square feet. So we just in fact, we are going to apply it as one twenty-eight. So that one twenty-eight times four thousand, which is like adding three hundred and twenty. And we're going to do four thousand three hundred and twenty, excuse me. And we'll do four thousand zero twenty, excuse me, twenty thirty times point five five, that's kind of the standard that will apply to calculate the maximum floor area ratio. All right, and we have some photos of the subject property, um, you'll notice that on San Felipe Avenue, it does look like a one-story home, but on the second avenue, it's. It's very gray, but there's two stories now, so there's two different pieces because of the same corner of law. And in the definition, we have three bedrooms and two bathrooms. The home has one thousand five hundred and twenty-two square feet and a three hundred and eighty-three square foot garage. Moving on to the proposed project, we'll do the summary and then the site plan as well, so you can see where those proposed additions are, are being. So on the first floor, we have an addition of six hundred and fifty-one square feet. On the second floor, we'll see an addition of five hundred and thirty-two square feet. The first floor, uh, one thing to note about the first floor is that they are considering an eight hundred and fifty-three square foot A D U. So that'll be built within the walls of the home, um, and there's gonna be a separate e-brass that will, will find the elevations as well. So we actually have the site plan, and the addition is shown in bright blue, so it'll be standing on duty rear vertically and horizontally. In red, we have the demolition of an existing pergola. In brown, we have the addition, an addition of a patio. And in the garden, we have the first and second story renovation, so a lot of, um, work we propose is go for. Moving on to the fourth plan, we're still discussing and then propose as well. So changes to the fourth floor plan includes, in pink, we have addition of six hundred and fifty-one square feet of floor area. In green, we show the ceiling height, uh, the first floor, that is under seventy feet, so that means their revision will be previously figured, um, uninhabitable space or uninhabitable space. And in red, we have the relocation of the stairway. In blue, we have the garage that's just a little bit, and in the red dashed outline, it is a little hard to, to read, but in the red dashed outline, we have the proposed A D U. And just to note, during our architectural review committee meeting on, and there were two suggestions that were provided by our A R C. The first is we need to infer that the window at the rear, um, this is gonna be the right most window, we wanted to make sure that it was fireable, so. That note was provided by, by the provision, and the second suggestion was that we saw the added to connect the garage from the activity room, so the asset and site were, um. Were, um, they did take those, excuse me, they did take those divisions into consideration, so we'll see over the plan today. These second floors include additions of five hundred and thirty-two square feet and a investment that stands vertically, vertically, and which we need in red to propose relocation of the stairway. Moving on to the five elevations, also existing and proposed ones again. So there could be no changes to the new front elevations, so there's definitely still a part on, on the side of the building. On the left elevation, highlighting a three D expansion, um, horizontally, and there's the same thing on the right hand side. The green, we have the addition to the rear, and then in blue, we've highlighted the change from a, an existing timber to a stable roof. So that would be the rear elevation. And now we're gonna go over why an A R permit is required. There are two reasons, the first reason that the addition to the property exceeds one thousand square feet, and the second reason that the listed square footage. Exceeds three thousand square feet, so for those reasons, um, an architectural review permit is required. And highlighting element three. Moving on to the conditional use permit, there are three reasons why a conditional use permit is required for the scope of work. The first reason that the increase in the ground floor area exceeds fifty percent, and so in the pink, we highlighted that. The addition to this property is going to exceed the two percent to the existing floor area. The second reason why a conditional use permit is required is because the floor area exceeds the permitted floor area standards. Um, so going back to the earlier slide, we did the four thousand three hundred and twenty adjusted lot size. When we multiply that by the point five five floor area ratio, we have, um, we're showing here that the proposed. Wherever this will result in a point seven one five floor area ratio, so that's one hundred and fifty in mind. The second is going to be point five three, when we remove eight hundred square feet per, um, Urban Code six five eight five two point two, uh, subdivision B. And so state law doesn't allow that we weigh eight hundred square feet from, from an addition that includes an A D U. And moving on to the third reason, the law tells me that these restrictions of sections, uh, twelve point two hundred point four five oh, and that's going to be R eight percent of the lot size. So with the addition, um, and the addition of the, excuse me, with the addition to the home and the addition of the wealth of the debt. We see an impervious surface of one thousand eight hundred and sixty-eight square feet, and then when we weigh eight hundred square, square feet from the A D U, we have one thousand six hundred square feet. All right, and this may be the most important slide of this presentation, um, I highlighted in the yellow, we have. What was the zoning requirements that had exceeded, um, based on the scope of works without the square, without the eight hundred square feet weighed. And then in the green, we discovered that are still exceeding once we have weighed those eight hundred square feet. So, the peanut goes to make sure that we're, we're pushing this two thousand two hundred and forty-nine, and that's going to be the only number that exceeds. After we've weighed eight hundred square feet, so requirement for this own addition is going to be two thousand two hundred and forty-two, probably adjusted lot size. And the last way is that for the men that we, um, put in A R two three dash zero one zero and U P two three dash zero zero eight for the following finding. The project conforms with the gold all these standards of the zoning code and general plan, since the design of the addition is compatible with the neighborhood character. And the project conform to the character of the neighborhood based on use of similar materials and design of the neighboring homes. First, the project will not be exempted from public health, safety, or welfare of the residents residing in the community. And lastly, the project needs an attractive building environment to provide for the facade of the alteration, so that it plays the thought alter art situation. And these are requirements of the daylight claim on the two opposite sides of the outlines. There's all for staff. And there was no question.
Great, thank you, um, any questions from the commission for staff?
A minor, uh, this year, uh, I have probably got a terrible allergy attack, I think aggravated by the smoke flying down. Um. I don't think it mattered that much, but the, it's been, I, I can't remember whether we discussed it, like, I know I saw this in our test review. Does it make sense to exclude the A D U in lot coverage if it's a two-story building and that part of the lot will be covered by the building regardless of A D U, is that how the A D U law? That seems curious, and I think maybe like half of it or something, using a building, it's weird.
In the Indian state law, and Michael may have a different answer, in Indian state law, there's no specific language that this, if the A D U is part of an addition to remove, say, what are already printed scripty or. If it's less than the printed scripty to remove that part of the, uh, lot coverage.
I mean, it certainly probably doesn't make a difference in this case anyway, it's a different, but I, I was like, that seems weird. I don't know, maybe something to look into for future, because it might, it could impact the future project. In terms of the decision of whether it's a need to conditionally use permit or not.
Just to chime in, um, many cities do not even consider lot coverage, um, and that might be why it's not in a state guideline, because. All cities can, uh, consider F A R, but it's not all considered lot coverage, that's what we. So maybe that's why.
Yeah, for the chair, so it, it looks like the addition is approximately five hundred, you know, more or less per feet additional or plain. Right, so to exclude eight hundreds, it, it's a little bit weird. Um, right?
Yeah, I, I think it doesn't matter in this case, I think, but if, but if it's a joint project, it's like.
Actually, it does for me.
Oh, really?
Well, cause, so what I see is they don't exactly do the setback, they, they cover as much areas as they can, with, just on a setback, and they haven't considered any lot coverage. Um, so that it's not really harmonious with the intent of the lot coverage principle to, you know, create some green space in the home, so. We didn't expect to that here.
Any other questions for staff?
Yeah, so actually, here, here's one quick, um, you guys asked to add a door at the, even garage and the activity room, um, this is probably gonna get cut up to building. Uh, department, but it, it looks like they put the door in the landing, I, I don't know if that is allowed, that might be.
Uh, are you referring to the four in the dream highlight here?
Be, between. Yes, that's right.
So are they adding, have you answered, add a box there?
I, I don't know if you have the words, I think, but I'm sure they'll figure that out.
I don't believe it's a thing, I think it's gonna be located underneath the stairs. That's always refreshing, so.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, the line work isn't very clear there, but it looks like it's on a gray, it got white.
Yeah, we know it's actually, well, that might be helpful.
That's, that's fine, um, that's not a big issue for me, I, if they didn't have that, that would be fine.
And, and to your question, uh, the building division has already reviewed the plans, um, we've requested conditions, so when they. Do submit for a building permit, that's meaning that it would be evaluated, um, if there's any marketations, it would be at the director level, rather than going back to science mission. So, if, if there are, I guess, any marketations we could check in, would be with, had it during the project phase.
Yeah, um, question, so with this, um, they, they definitely brought the, the rear of the house far back to Oakland. It, it, someone overlooks the, the neighbors who have a different orientation of their house, right, the rent part particular. Was there any feedback or anything from, from the neighbors?
We did not receive any public comment of, for this item at least. And for, of course, for all, and we, and we do, we noticed the newspaper, and we're being noticed to properly own people with three hundred feet, so.
Did we get a confirmation of the notice or sent out?
Yes, so whenever we, um, well, whenever we set out notices, I make an extra one, and I send it back to city hall, and so nothing, um. If there was a, say, like a, a, a notice that came back, it'd be this, it would be because the address was not, or there was, um. They put back during the postal service, so we always make sure that a notice comes back to city hall.
And, and so only a complaint would trigger, would trigger that, a privacy study or a shadow study, is that correct?
Uh, yes, uh, yeah, uh, yeah, we don't, well, again, we don't require, uh. Uh, shadow studies, uh, that was, you know, obviously an issue you need to, the one situation, um. But if you look closely, I believe with rear elevation here, it isn't, in terms of the wind, the windows of lights. Actually looking back towards the house behind, it's not, yeah, because right now you've got the two windows that. I believe are both bedroom windows that are, uh. Are, are two separate bedrooms that are on the, on the ends of the elevation, in this case, I think you have just now one bedroom and then a bathroom. Um, in the new addition, and a little bit sort of, a little smaller, um, so it's, it's a comparable, kind of. Kind of, uh, you know, impacted the neighbor as what's there, except of course, it's a little further out. But the, the rear setback does exceed the ten feet, so, uh, I believe to the, uh, to the patio. Um, it's not all the way that, it's a really good job.
It's not all the way back, it's part of the government, I thought it was wrong.
Yeah, then, then I thought a rear setback is ten would be ten. To the structure and the patio, I believe is, is as. So it's, uh, yeah, they've got ten feet to the patio, and the patio is just flat, it's just flat on the ground.
It's twenty from the fence to the, from the E, but yeah, from here, yeah.
Or that's twenty, yeah, twenty to the back E wall.
The back wall.
Yeah, twenty to the back wall, and the E to the patio, which is just flat on the ground, and. I'm not sure if that's raised, it wouldn't.
So they, they have the height, um, from grade to the top of. The gable, that is only nineteen and a half feet, that, that's gotta be wrong. Did you, it's two, it's a two-story flat somewhere.
If it's just two stories, so they're matching the, the height of the existing home.
On the back, on the very back of the house, where it slopes down quite far. See, that's a sixteen.
Feet, but that, that can't be right, oh, well, okay, based on the way our code reads. The, um, even when you have a, a sloping situation like this, it's from the midpoint of the, um, the slope on the house. So you can see the.
Yeah, you're choosing from the midpoint of the, of the.
Uh, this, yeah, yeah, so, so the height is based on the way our code interprets it, the sixteen feet. Even though it's actually higher, it, I mean, it's gotta be close to the max, and everyone.
Right.
Gotta be close to that, but yeah. Okay, um, and I, I will, uh, through the chair, I will point out just what our, the reading from our, our code says. About development standard waivers, development standards regarding lot coverage, floor area ratio, impervious surface, and lot size shall be waived. To allow maximum weight out of square foot, each house to attach accessory dwelling in it with a maximum of sixteen feet in height. Oh, and it's, uh, a lot covers attraction, right? It's good. Uh, correct, okay, yeah, lot coverage for area, impervious surface, we, the state has, has been very clear that we, you know. None of our development standards can prohibit someone from building at least eight hundred, eight hundred square foot A D U. So if, if it was violating other standards, yeah, in our code, other development standards, such, uh, such setback or. Anything else, we, we have to basically try to accommodate it.
Um, I do have a question, I think I know if this is something that was brought up, probably not at the A R C meeting, but there is, uh. Kind of a double window, double stacked window, and then that's in the stairwell. And it has some really interesting shutters coming along, some double made shutters. I don't know if that, um, popped the eye of any of the other commissioners, but it was really rather odd to me. Um, funny stack when there's, that was on the top of the other, um. It, it, it doesn't bother me so much that I'd say absolutely, I can't handle it, but I would consider doing something different, um, unless the commissioner has something else to say about that. And, and just to make sure we're gonna be the same when there is usually the B on the select elevations.
Yeah, the upper right, yeah, the A R C, I didn't realize that that was, were, uh, the honestly, um, it looks like it's all windows on that side.
Correct, um, and I think I'd like to have our architects be more on the design choices, so if we can provide Chica, the. Okay, Chica.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Uh, so, uh, could you repeat the question?
Uh, yeah, hi, uh, my question for you is, uh, I see what appears to be a, uh, two windows stacked in the stairwell area. Just left at the garage in the, uh, lot elevation, and, um. I just noticed that there, there's a lot of shutter action going on over there, and it looked really to my eye. Um, and I was just curious that, that was intentional, or if, if you were, were you really gonna be putting in all those shutters all stacked up there?
No, I think it's a fair question, I'm not someone that particularly likes shutters, but the existing house has shutters, if you look at the, uh, photos or the existing elevation. No, I think it's a fair question, I'm not someone that particularly likes shutters, but the existing house has shutters, if you look at the, uh, photos or the existing elevation. There are shutters, especially on the sides that are visible from the street, there are not on the sides that are not, that's how the house was. Built or, you know, when I when I approached it, so in, um. The spirit of the guidelines and, um, matching the the proposed with the existing. I opted to put shutters on, but I think the owner and I would be open to removing the shutters from the staircase window, um. If that's something the commission feels, uh, would improve the design.
I would approve the design, I think that the the spirit of the house originally is, you know, fairly modest, and and I don't know if the stairwell window is. And it's already kind of divergent from the the cube of the facade we had going on before, so. I I I would prefer to see it without the shutters, um, I I guess I would make this more of a suggestion than a. Than a requirement, but I would encourage you to consider not putting shutters on that window.
That sounds fine.
Great, thank you.
Uh, any other comments from the owner or the architect you'd like to share, uh, again, optional, uh, but if you wanted to make a. Remarks on your design, uh, feel free, please.
Uh, no, I think that everything sounded like it was covered, it sounded like there was one concern from a commissioner about. Building out too far, and then another commissioner clarified that we were not building out to the rear setback, but trying to keep, you know, about a twenty-foot, uh, yard. It was just that that patio, so, um, I could have clarified that more in the drawing, and I'll look at that, um, I'll review that next time. Um, but yeah, just that that's not there, and then the heights, uh, so I think everything's been, um, clarified, if there's anything. Any other questions or clarifications, um, uh, please let me know.
Just looking at the the designs, it looks like in the existing situation, there's already a significant chunk of paved over area. And we're eliminating the, uh, gazebo pergola structure that's like right up against the property line. Um, I don't know if either the architect or or staff did like a net change in impervious, it doesn't look like it's it would be pretty negligible. Run over that, and I missed it.
So, or our last, that's okay, or our last row, we did do an an devaluation for impervious surfaces. And zoning requirement is going to be eighty-five percent of the lot size.
That's why you are you counting the new paved patio as new impervious, because I don't, that's that's actually true. But, wow.
I don't think we did, oh, sorry, I don't think we did, it was just gonna be the addition up to the year. Well, I think we do those, you know, those qualifications for there, and, but again, I don't think, I think it's very critical, that change.
Like look at it from a satellite view, there's a substantial chunk that's paved over there, and then the gazebo area is paved over, and it looks like they were gonna clear that away, and that becomes law, I'm not sure on that. Anyway. Okay, um, so there's no more, sorry, I'm scared, go ahead. I'm gonna go back to the height, um, you know, I was just there before the meeting, uh, definitely, the the drawings are wrong. Um, I believe that the nineteen and a half, that's drawing, the drawing that I have in front of me. Uh, minus you from the bottom of fourth place, so where you stand on the first floor, but it's definitely not gonna be through grade. Um, so so help me out here, just in the event that the drawings are wrong, how much room do they have to play with?
So the maximum height for an arbor district would be twenty feet feet.
Okay.
So based on the drawing, it sounds about nine feet, if they have, um. And we we generally do not go out there measuring the height of of existing homes based on the drawings that show that they're going to match that height. Um, but if that's something that the commission wants us to do, or or how do we do so?
No, no, and it's, you know, you've heard about these issues that come like after they start building it, and then realize like, oh, this is a lot higher than it's in the drawings. And, you know, um, and so that that's right, looking, front look around the corner here. If they have, it it's realistic, it was probably five to six feet more than the drawing showed. Just just based on the model, where where the grades are, right, your grades is gonna be sharp, it this is a very steep area. Um, and it's definitely gonna feel taller than twenty feet, but you said twenty-eight feet, I they're probably gonna be safe. Um. And and maybe we can leave it up to the applicant to, you know, figure it out before, hey, before they start building, if they think they're gonna have an issue, they can do their own house. But, right, but I'm gonna be okay.
Okay, uh, I I just wanted to show you right, uh, right side elevation at least.
Yeah.
Shows the highest point at nineteen five.
That's on the high side, so if you go onto the street side, which would be the opposite elevation where the garage is. It's it's even lower, and so and and really that visual effect, right, so if you're if you're standing, you know, on, forget it, it's something, you got Cypress or Belleville. Um, past the garage, looking up, it's gonna be much higher than this grade here. Um, so what you have to do is, you know, you took the fourth place, and they they, I think they showed in the drawing, twenty seven or eight foot of lot.
We're not exceeding this all. In bridge, right, the existing bridge is being maintained, right?
Yes, that's correct.
And it's just a grade, this this drawing call, so I don't think this is correct, um, this showed the drawing above. It's on the opposite elevation on the west side. Uh, here I get the problem, it's the, yeah, it's the from the left west side elevation. It's it's showing a flat grade from the garage, but that's not. What the street looks like. So, um, this. I'll I'll personally be okay to let them go, but it's probably a cautionary test, but. They can get held up while building, they they are shown to this evening.
And they they are showing the 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 plate heights on the ground floor are low, it's it's only seven feet, ten inches.
Right, right.
Plate plate height, a foot of, uh, floor, and then only an eight foot. Plate height for the upper floor, and a really low pitched roof. Uh, it's a pretty modest, um.
Pretty modest, by my count, it's four foot eight, it's it's a long tall roof, so maybe around twenty-four, twenty-five feet at the ridge.
Right.
It's like it's a slant grade or something down there.
Yeah, presumably they'll be extending a grade from the garage, so it is flat, sort of what they're measuring from, but I see what you mean, that if you go towards the street there. It's actually sloping down the floor, it's, yeah, they're gonna have to have, um, a pretty tall period. Yeah.
Okay, go for it, if you find my interest. You know, and looking at this, if they continue to improve around that. We're moving even a little playing at that roof, that a lot less mass. Would you like to consider, like, the original roof plan, and look at that?
If if there's the envelope, you know, the building standards are supposed to point eight feet, so if they're gonna be under that anyway.
Okay, but initially, we continue that look of the roof all the way around. So. So to give, like, do that, or?
Okay, I'm not my lover.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, I I can say, you know, what I think is looking nicer.
Well, that's why we're here, you think it would look better?
There 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 are certain things that, uh, like. You know, it's very individualistic, but I'll I'll try to avoid it.
Okay. Okay, uh, no more questions for the protector owner, um, and now we'll open for, uh, public comment on this item. Do we have anyone who wants to, uh, speak on this one?
At this point, there are no hands, Chris.
Okay, um, I guess we'll close the public comment on this one then, and, uh. Uh, yeah, I was, uh, one of the initial comments that I was part of the A R C, and I think, um, I was happy to see that. The couple suggestions regarding the the stairs and, uh. Who was, but I'm glad that they made the updates. Um, yeah, my concern was with the coverage as well, but given the, uh, production based on the A D U. Seemed like they were very, they had a very small over, uh, a little limit on lot coverage, it would be forty something for feet. Uh, I'm I'm looking at it, um, that in that regard, and so, uh, I thought it was a good budget, and. I'll be keeping up to the main commission. Anyone else have any comments? Anyone like to make a motion?
Happy to move that we, uh, approved, um, architecture of use permit, A R twenty-three zero one zero, and use permit, U twenty-three, uh, double O eight. Uh, based on the the findings of staff and the condition of approval.
Would would the recommendation to remove the shutters?
Yes, very nice. I don't like that, I don't like some of that, a friendly amendment theoretically authored by a commission.
Theoretically off. Okay.
Outside. All right, do a little call, please.
Chairman.
Hi.
Commissioner.
Hi.
Commissioner Farm.
Hi.
Commissioner Coon.
Hi.
Commissioner Button.
Hi.
Motion passive, five to enter.
Great, thank you. Okay, uh, moving on to item seven C, which is ten nineteen San Mateo Avenue. So a request for a new permanent amendment to allow the conversion of an existing vehicle tow yard into an auto repair shop. The, uh, utilize an existing tow yard space in a, in the O eight dash O twenty-seven, which previously allowed a people to be aren't in an industrial building district. Pursuant to twelve point nine, six point one, five oh, eight point one. Sam Al Kanani is applicant and boss marshal is the owner. You have a, right?
All right, we're just, the thing is, it's a crucial sign. So, ten ninety seven here is located on San Mateo Avenue, in the stretch street, and for most of the street, the lot size is seven thousand five hundred square feet. And this is located within the M one district, so typically industrial uses. The lot size is seven thousand five hundred square feet, as they discussed, uh, the leaving room is, there is one parcel that is two thousand five hundred square feet, and then another parcel that is five thousand square feet. So we're gonna call that the subject property, um, both are owned by the same owner, boss marshal, um, and he would bring them to think this is kind of one whole unit. For the subject property, you'll notice that the building is is that creature, the property line, that twenty-five feet, twenty-five feet line, and the parking lot, and we're we're gonna call that the. The customer and employee parking area is going to be the other five thousand square foot lot. Parking adjacent includes the one thousand, uh, but the four thousand San Mateo Avenue, that's the former Sky Park Airport parking lot. And then, uh, existing auto repair business at ten twenty-nine, four ten. We also have a former glass manufacturer, division operations site at ten fifteen, ten ten, and then two of the rear, we have ten eighteen Montgomery, which is another auto related business for auto repair. And at ten twenty-four, we have a single family home. The applicant is most tired, as you'll find in the staff report, and has a business location at eight eight seven San Mateo Avenue. Um, and based on their description, and comes with staff, um, they're they're going to use the site tonight, uh, that we're discussing, ten nineteen San Mateo, as a satellite location. So auto repair for car events that are not, um, through the thousand ton capacity at taking seven, seven, therefore. So, um, we'll go from there. And the proposed project is very simple, there's no exterior changes, no interior changes to buildings, um. Outside of one minor change that will go over together. And then you scope it work tonight, or we can do the application tonight, and to amend the same use permit to allow auto repair. Previous permit that was approved in January of two thousand nine was to allow a tow yard office, and so we're going from one auto related use to another auto related use essentially. And the site plan here shows the building in the bottom left-hand corner, and the potential for, um, six, excuse me. Six parked cars in the rear of the lot, and then three parked cars in the front. So this project requires a commission use permit because, um, one, it's an auto related use in the M one district. So auto related uses include auto repair, as well as making the gap in civilization, that's the first reason. And the second reason being that because a use permit was required specifically for tow yard office, um, we changed to. First season, we changed from that use, uh, is now non-conforming, and because the property has been vacant for more than six months. That non-conforming use has now ceased to operate, and essentially that previous use permit has expired, so we're actually, that's kind of a brand new, uh, commission use permit. And that would be through our provision twelve point ninety-two, point zero two zero. In which any non-conforming use that is discontinued for a period of six months, that non-conforming use shall not be reestablished. Um, and so then we'll go back to the reason there's been, uh, expired, of course. And new auto related uses would require a use permit. So there are three major changes to this project. The first one means the restructuring of the rear parking lot to allow for six parking spaces. The second means an addition of a security gate for the rear parking lot, and that's going to be a dream. And then it's claimed that has adjusted a repair or replacement of the sidewalk to create an accessible path. They've also provided a detail on the proposed fence, but that's gonna match with the existing fence there, and they're just replacing this portion of the fence. Um, and that's going to create a security gate, so for any cars that have finished repair and are waiting for cuts or pickup, that's where cars will be parked behind that. What I could maintain. And we discussed, we mentioned one minor change to the fourth plan, and that's going to be an addition of an air compressor, which is highlighted in yellow. You'll notice that the fourth I already have an office, it's got a space to conduct auto repair, um, and again, we are only adding a an air compressor. To the fourth plan. So we're gonna highlight the key conditions here, and that's going to be found in section one, I believe. The first of three that will highlight is the change in, in which the applicant shall not utilize non-street parking, um, if you're aware, the M one district is. Already well impacted by parking, so one of our conditions is that the, any customer related parking or customer related, uh, vehicles upon the site. Either park behind the gate or park within the building, and even if the building is small, it it does look like there was two parking fit, if they do retain the parking space. Um, the order conditions is that they shall only accept any deployments for customers. That they can serve in either inside the shop, or if they have vehicles waiting to pick up, they'll be stuck again behind that security gate. So if any customer vehicle were required to stay overnight, again, they shall be stored within the facility or behind a lock gate. Commission thirteen states that the approval of this project does not release the applicant from applicable requirements, including but not limited to the grace permit and improvement plan. A building permit and just a different occupancy, and fire permit, and any applicable school issues development impact requirements. Commission sixteen, uh, is from the public works department, requiring that they show on site signs, sign off repair for damage or substantial location. And any repair or repairers shall meet and shall be in compliance with the city's energy sales, and then bring up the book section, page twelve point zero one zero. So tonight's approval, first week, tonight's recommendation is for the prime commission to approve, E P two three, dash. So tonight's approval, plus we tonight's recommendation is for the private commission to approve U two-three dash zero zero four. Under the three findings of security. The project will not be detrimental to the health, safety, morals, comfort and general welfare of the person residing. Or working in the such proposed beast. The second finding is that the project will not be dangerous or detrimental to the property or improvement in the neighborhood. Or to the general welfare of the city. And the last thing, the project will not be inconsistent with the general plan. And that's all, we can open the board questions.
Uh any question? No question? Uh there's a lot, there are.
Uh let me check here. So we are not, excuse me, we are not enjoined by the architect or the applicant.
Okay, great, um then I will, there's some questions, uh I'll give public comment on this item. Do we have any comments from the public?
There are no hands raised at this time.
Okay, uh. Any uh final discussion, question? Not seeing any, uh someone like to make a motion?
Yes, I, the chair, I'd like the motion that we approved use permit U P two three zero zero four. For the property of one zero one nine San Mateo Avenue. Hold second. And you take the problem.
Chairman.
Hi.
Krishna Gisodi.
Hi.
Krishna Harmon.
Hi.
Krishna Kuhn.
Hi.
Krishna Button.
Hi.
Five zero zero zero, pass.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, um we want to convince, agenda item number eight, so number nine is items from staff. We have two items.
Yes, uh funding commissioners, this uh item A from staff is just a uh recreational item. Uh to to make the commission aware of a proposed change. To rooftop screening on a modular at our Choco, so um uh on the screen is a a site plan. Um so in in April of twenty twenty-one, the planning commission approved uh. Uh an expansion to the Art Choco's casino, which included a remodeling of the kitchen. And as part of that approval, it included uh modulators that uh. Uh were approved to be located in the front parking lot. Um as shown in the dark area, you see there, uh models at San Mateo Avenue is on the bottom of your screen. And so those plans included, give them the next slide here. Um and this is, I apologize, a little difficult to see, but uh you can see the modulators and then um above the modulators. Uh there was a proposal on the plans that the planning commission reviewed that included um uh screening uh using. Um metal uh siding material uh to screen the rooftop equipment. And those, the same plans that were approved by the planning commission were also submitted to the building department. However, as uh the architect got more into uh the in our Choco's. Uh got more into the details, uh the modulators themselves, which are in place. Um and you go to the next slide, um have been installed and. Uh they 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 are leased modular units. And so to add the metal screening on on the roof would require a roof penetrations on the lease. Uh building, which is very problematic uh in in several ways, because it uh, you know, could. Uh damage the integrity of the roof material and it's extremely costly to do that. Uh for something that's gonna be in place for a year or less. Um so uh the planning direct, uh the community development director has reviewed uh the situation and is inclined to. Uh approve this modification, however, since the planning commission uh reviewed the plans that included the roof, the screening. I wanted to bring it uh before you, uh you know, prior to the uh community development director issuing the modification. And if we go to the next one, I think it's pretty clear that this picture, you can't even see, really see the modulators from. San Mateo Avenue unless you're really looking for them. Shows that the rooftop screening really would only be a benefit if you're, you know, parking your car in the front parking lot. But then, then again, at the same time, the modules are gonna be removed and it is just a temporary uh visual. Change.
Okay, uh do we need to vote on something or anything? Uh sorry, if you recuse, if there's anything on our.
Uh there's there's no no vote required, and we do have um representative here, if there are any questions about the the situation.
Okay, I'll just be point guard, does anyone have any questions or comments?
Yeah, no, I'm concerned, okay, great, thank you. Okay.
And then it looks like we need some airs and volunteers.
Yes, um however, looking, we have two items. And um one is the continued nine nine ninety uh El Cabina Real project. Since the architect was not available to make the meeting, the applicant had requested a continuance of that. Um and then we have a new item, which is on Hames and Commissioner Kuhn is would be. Um have a conflict of interest for that, so he gets the night off. Um and so we'd be with the three uh three individuals to uh staff the October. Twelve A R C meeting.
Uh is is this the one in your email where you requested? People who are on the A R C previously to redo it?
Uh yes, it all, it all, but I possible, but I think, yeah, given the the conflict and who may or may not be available. Um I think any three members would be fine.
Okay, well, I'll I'll, I don't I don't think I was on that one, but I can volunteer for this next one. If you can't get the original three, okay, or as a backup. Great, anyone else available?
I was one of the originals, but my son comes to town that week, so I will say I'll be a backup.
Okay.
I have a comment.
Okay.
Let's see, I'm just like looking back at the email we discussed, and you said we're scheduling a bunch of these. Um yeah, I, yeah, the eight, ten, twelve, um I'm also like, yeah, I mean, I can do it. Everybody's having conflicts, it's like I have a, I have another easy thing to do, maybe it's right after, it's getting scheduled for. They, I can do ten twelve, maybe to somebody.
Yeah.
Do we know who was on the original besides, I should be, sorry, there. I believe uh Commissioner Johnson. And also I'll we'll check with uh with Marco as well. Okay, yeah, so I think I think we'll be fine. Okay, so thank you.
Okay, I think that's uh that item, item ten is any comments from members?
Um we we also, was there also a special nine twenty eight meeting that we nailed on who is, right?
Yes, thank you, thank you, we should probably do that as well. Um so I had. Let's see, Krishna Kuhn uh was available. Uh Commissioner Pia Savi. And. Let's see, I think Thomas, you, I didn't, I'd be. You had a que- a question mark, are you gonna be available on that one?
Um. That's still a question, if you absolutely need me, so I'll be there at that point. But I will probably be back by seven P M, so.
Okay, that would be, yeah, that would be earlier, it would be at six, so, yeah, we'll just.
Probably be back by six.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll, okay, we'll try to do. And what does that mean?
Okay, so this is um an A R C special meeting, this is for. The proposed ten-story uh old family residential on San San Bruno Avenue. At the A T and T building, the stuff from El Cabino.
Say that for it?
Ten-story.
Okay, well. Yeah, I don't know if I, I can't remember, but I am not available, I, um, Chicago. Okay, I can't remember how I answered that one.
Uh yeah, and I, yeah, I don't have a, didn't market, so, okay.
I can admit like nine twenty-eight is actually better for me than ten twelve.
Okay, so, yeah. Okay, great, so.
Nine twenty or ten twenty?
Nine twenty.
Nine twenty-two.
Yeah.
Great. So any, any others that can be?
I'm a paper calendar guy, so I'm just trying to.
You know, if I didn't be down for it, and I'll, I can't, I'll reach out.
I mean, I'll check with, I'll check with the other.
I mean, I'll building this one, yeah.
Yeah, yes, yes, um so this is, uh, yeah, without saying too much, without, so we don't wire away the ground. Um so this is a proposed that's taking advantage of uh. Several state laws and primarily the state debt bonus law, which allows for the addition of three, three additional stories or. In this case, thirty-three feet of additional height. Um if the project's one hundred percent affordable, so it is taking advantage of a number of the state density bonus laws. Uh for the proposal.
Okay, well, thank you, that's, that's very helpful, thank you so much. Okay, uh if there's nothing else, we're adjourned. All right, thank you, everybody. Nice, greats.
But I don't know how to begin with that meeting on the list, like twenty-eight, but I am on. We got other people.